Truth in Budgeting Hearing to order at 6:30. We have presentations, as those of you who know if you've attended before, this is the meeting that we are required to spell out everything that is happening with respect to our budget for end of the year and into next year.
Tammy Shatz, can I get it started with the village tax rate, always known as the L-29 report?
If I smell like bacon, I apologize because we have mail. It's not bacon.
Every year we're required to bring this to you for approval for part of the budget process. We submit this to the local municipalities, the city of Richmond, the townships, to collect property taxes for us. So you'll notice on here, the top line is operating for non-homestead property. We are asking for 18 mils. We are not subject to an early rollback this year, which is good, so we'll be able to allow the full 18 mils. That will expire in June of 2037. We also have a number of debt issues. If you look at that in total, if you add up what we are asking for, which is in column nine, it says maximum allowable village levy, we're asking for 2.62 for debt, .62 for debt, 1.08 for debt, .78, and .40. When you add those numbers together, that's 5.5 mils for debt, which is the same as it was for 2017. If you have any other questions on the 4029?
Anyone?
Moving right along, we'll go into the budget. The reason we have this budget hearing is to discuss those operating village rates and how those will support the budgets that we're asking for approval for 2018-19. Okay, for debt, our total tax revenue on all the properties is $519,464,658, which is up from a year ago, but we're still asking for the 5.5 mils to cover our debt obligations. The 5.5 mils will generate $2.859 million in revenues, and that will help to cover our debt expenditures of $2,839,000. For the general fund, just some of our challenges that we're facing, and again, they're similar to where we were a year ago. We still have enrollment declining, where graduating classes are larger than the incoming kindergarten classes, and then with that decline, keeping the districts right size as far as staffing goes, and then while we still provide the quality programs that we do here for educational purposes here originally. To go into our assumptions that we use for the budget, we projected our foundation to be a $240 increase, which will give us $7,871 per student. We use the blended student count of just under 1,034. We're doing a transfer again this year from food service of 20,000, and then we have various grants that are budgeted to remain the same. There will be adjustments coming as we submit our consolidated application for Title I and Title II, and as we get our funding and put our budget expenditures together for IDEA.
Tammy, that 7,871 amount, while that is an increase, that still keeps us at, that's still the base.
That's still the minimum foundation.
Of a district that had a lot more than us.
Absolutely. Richmond is still a minimum foundation district.
As I said before, we hit the same amount as charter schools. Charter schools do not have the expenses that we have, such as transportation.
Okay, so our general fund revenues, again, built on 18 mils, will generate $2.7 million, this function of $2.8 million. We'll have other local revenues that includes things like gate receipts, pay to participate, our childcare program. We will not have any revenues for ninth grade sports, we're just including those in the budget, and our pay to participate in admissions are both for athletics and for theater programs. That will bring in $443,000. Our state aid foundation will be just under $9.7 million. Our GSRP grant, which has passed through MACOM ISD, will bring in $254,000. And then we have federal grants, primarily that's our special ed IDEA program, Title I and Title II. That's $1.1 million for a total budget of revenues in the general fund of $14,260,686. If you want to know how that translates into a per pupil, it's $10,304 when you add all the revenues together. One of the things you'll notice with this pie chart is that our state revenues make up about 70% of all the revenues. Our local revenues are 23%. Our federal programs bring in 7%, and then the other is not even 1%. We rely heavily on funding from the state, so when any fluctuations occur at the state level, it does impact us. But we do believe we have the $240 for next year for students. The foundation grant, again, is $1,384. That shouldn't be a dollar, that should be students. Per pupil foundation grant, $7,871. If you multiply those together, you get a total foundation of $10,893. We collect the local taxes, those 18 mils, that gives us $2.78 million. The balance of the $8,112 comes from the state. If we don't levy our full 18 mils, the state still assumes we do, so we take that subtraction when they decide how much they're going to send us in the form of IDEA.
So when you look at that total revenue, the foundation is based on those two key components. That was, I think we went to Florida about a year ago regarding a renewal of that non-homestead for 20 years, which takes us to 20. If that were to fail, the state doesn't make that up, they only give us what they're fortunate, but they're assuming every district's going to levy 18 mils.
Just real quick, too, I know that the plan to have more funding for high school students, is that still a question mark?
The per pupil in the high school is, but there is funding for students in CTE program. What that is hasn't been clarified yet.
So that's not a great... Okay, just to clarify, yeah?
Thank you. So let me get to our expenditure assumptions. These are things you've been talking about and making decisions on for several months now. We reduced the curriculum director position. We added the director of athletics, facilities, and school safety position. We are replacing retired teachers. We've added the STEM and Title I positions. The district's healthcare, if we assume that the cap is going to go up the same as it did in January of '18, that would be a 3.4% increase. We did build that in. The MITSR's retirement rate increased 2.4%, and we did put in also the contract steps and off-schedule payments as we were doing our new year's earnings.
So that MITSR's retirement, we were paying this year 36.88% for every dollar we spent on retirement. Next year, we'll be paying 38.39%. That's a lot of money we're paying to the retired system. As you went through the audit, you've seen that now unfunded liability is now being put on our whole institution.
So with those assumptions, our expenditures fall into salaries at $7 million, benefits at $4.5 million, purchase services at $1.8 million, supplies at just over $800,000. We do have a little capital out of there, GSRP grant of $8,000, and then all the other things like dues and things we pay to other districts, $102,000, bringing our total expenditures to $14,268,86.
Just to, the purchase services, that dollar amount would include any edu staff employee or those kinds of positions to work, right?
Yeah, so it includes our substitutes that are employees or edu staff, also frontline. We need legal and audit services, workshops and conferences, our building, maintenance, repair costs, our new custodial and maintenance services contracts, trash pickup, those kinds of things. When you look at supplies, that $100,000, that includes gas for our buses, fuel for our buses, natural gas and electricity costs. Those are considered supplies.
As well as classroom supplies that we allocated.
In the other category, that is down compared to where we have been because the energy bonds have been paid, and that other category included $160,000 of energy bonds in 2018. If you want to look at the pie chart, our salaries are about 50% of the budget, benefits are another 32%, so when you combine that, our personnel costs are about 82% of the budget. Our purchase services are around 12%, supplies 5%, and everything else is about 1%. If you notice, when I presented revenues and expenditures, they equal. We don't have surplus, we don't have a deficit, we have a balanced budget for 2018-19. We're projecting our fund balance at the end of '18 to be $681,791, and with the balanced budget for '18-19, that will carry through for 2019 as well, which is 4.78% of our total revenues.
Quite so, a little over 6% for that early warning language. But this is a, this has been a long road to get to this point, to eliminate the structural deficits, so I'm glad that we're presenting it as a balanced budget.
This is the first time it's happened in years that I've worked with. That's the first time I've seen that happen. It's amazing.
Definitely a good start. If you don't see where, we also have a food service fund, it's not necessarily required for the budget hearing, but I wanted to give you some information on that. We collect local revenues, which is primarily food sales, at just under $225,000. For state reimbursements, it's at $58,918. Federal reimbursements at $173,000, and then we do estimate commodities, that's a very rough estimate at $25,000. We really don't know that until we get to the end of the year, we do a projection. Expenditures, mostly costs go just to preparing and buying food supplies at $468,000, and we do have to transfer $20,000 from food service to general. The reason we do that is the general fund, we take care of payroll, we take care of paying the bills, we take care of the utilities, so all of that allows us to do an indirect cost rate. And when we use that indirect cost and apply it to our expenditures in the food service fund, we can transfer up to whatever that dollar of fluctuation is. Right now, we're estimating it to be $20,000. One of the things that I should tell you is that last year's food service budget, we purchased a van and we purchased an oven for the elementary that we did not plan to do this year. If we have written for a grant for expenditures, if we can get some kitchen equipment grant, we will pass them as well, or we'll see how long before we find that out.
One of the things that grabbed me real was our walk-in freezer at the elementary spoke to capacity, it's not very, but it's sort of loaded where that physically locates, although hopefully in a couple of weeks when we got the grant.
Do you apply for that grant?
Through the state of Michigan, and because we've never done it before, conceptually, I give preference to new districts, so we're hoping very well.
Well, awesome. You're great. We're kind of on the second tier priority. The highest tier are the districts with the highest need. We're not considered highest need with a 60% revenue, so we're going well under that, but we have modified that grant before, so that gives us the next year as a possibility. So we'll keep our finish costs. We should also mention the food service fund. We did increase our state revenues and our expenditures for our summer food service program, which is off the run, and keeping everybody busy. So now I want to give you some detail on the general fund. Again, there are lots of columns on here, they're in here packed, and I just sometimes think it's helpful to know what last year's actual was, where we started the year, and where we're projecting to end the 2018 year, and then the final break in column is the original 18-19, so you have a lot of comparative data there. I'm going to kind of highlight just the 18-19. If you look at revenues, the state revenues, you can see for 2018 final, there's a $10,161. That decreases to $9 million for 2019. In 2018, we received what they call a one-time MITSR payment into the retirement systems. We received the money as state revenue, so we paid that out. That was $155,000. We will not see that, we're not anticipating that revenue for next year, and we don't have those expenses. When we get down to looking at the basic program expenses, if you look at the retirement expenditures, you'll see a significant difference. That's around $50,000, $55,000 for the elementary, the high school, and middle school. Going down, again, if you look at retirement benefits for 2018 at $551,000 at the elementary, down to just under $500,000 for next year.
As you look at those three levels, we did have to make some assumptions building the budget with staff that retired. We had to make an assumption of where they, on the matrix, they would go, as well as the healthcare assumption. We don't know if there's going to be a single person, two persons, or a whole family, so that may change if we hire someone with a full family. We assumed a two-person, $7,000, that would increase that some way.
But we did replace the retired staff. We cruised down to special education. There are a lot of changes in the preschool, the summer school. We get to special education, it's down the monkey increases, and there are two things that drive that. One is we went from a part-time early childhood special education program, we're making that full-time program because we have the numbers. So that's been increased to full-time, and then just any IDEA changes that require a change in the level of service and loyalty standing.
So that part-time is the early childhood specialized ones, half-day, so we have a down number to run two half-day programs for that program.
Going down, again, down a lot of changes in some of these areas, I'm going to cruise to them quickly. If there's anything you want to leave staff, just let me know. Get down to speech, that psychological, social work, those again are driven, that DEA change is driven by what IDEA's show, where we have a need for, how many students pay services. DC services, other people's services, most of these changed, but they stay pretty much the same. Next section, we get to supervision of instructional staff. You'll see a major change there, where we went from over $300,000 and was basically cutting it down to $150,000. That is the elimination of the director for a different position. Next change will be under other business services. You can see the top line under other business services and the retirement incentive payments. You can see those increased, we have the new retiree, we're seeing those incentive payments, so that interferes in the budget for what we'll be paying in 2019. Then we get to operations and magnets. As you know, we have a new custodial and magnet services agreement, so those, the change in the structure of those costs are included in this budget, where purchase services have changed and supplies have decreased. I think that the last one to highlight was the elimination of the need to pay the energy bonds in the last section. Those were retired in May of '18, which brings our, the energy bond payments, those are over 18-19. Their total general fund expenses go from $14.6 million down to $14,260.
So I just want to point out this one. You see, our original budget, we were anticipating spending $181,000 of fund balance back in June of this time last year. When we amended the budget in February, we were at about 140, we anticipated. There's been several expenses, unitments had to be fixed and some of the repairs, so we're still under the original budget, but we were higher than what we anticipated in February for $166.
We had some insurance changes that came in as well, where someone maybe went professional into a family insurance.
Yeah, so people's personalized changes, did different changes in their healthcare builder, we had a new cost.
You said heating, heating, something like that?
There's some repairs that we had on some heating and cooling units there. We have the fire suppression system and stuff like that, that we didn't anticipate happening.
As you can see, our fund equity ending percentage at 4.78, and then early warning at just over 6%. And then we have different categories that you probably talked about, so if you have any questions on that.
Can I ask again what is not taken into consideration for the early warning?
Basically, your grants, the stuff that you don't have control over, your Title I, your IDEA, those are restricted funds, so they take those, that revenue out of the calculation. When the law went originally to effect, it didn't, so our early warning would have put us below 5%, which, a lot of the work at the ISD and the other business directors, they kind of brought the reality, like that should be taken out because we don't have a say in how that one is spent. That's a revenue in, revenue out.
And we had a decrease.
We have a decrease in the revenue for next year for title funds because of what's coming from the federal.
Right, the federal decrease.
So, and I mentioned it before, but the amount of professional development that we did this year will be reduced because the money is not there for next year as much.
That's all I have, unless you have additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. All right, that is the end of our budget hearing. Okay, I'm going to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. It is 7:04. At this time, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on its own, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is our mission statement.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in global communities. Chris, here.
Sarah, here.
Kyle.
Here.
Margaret.
Here.
David Worth is not here, he has given notice in that absence.
Yep.
I am here, so we have a forum.
Okay, thank you. Next, looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
The agenda is presented.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to accept the requisition of super credit and approve the consent agenda as presented in the HHS application.
Second. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian?
We have two of our, one of our hires that I see here, Kelly Galeno?
Delao.
Delao, I'm sorry. She is taking over for the first tech challenge team at the middle school. She resigned from the position, so she's stepping out, so.
[applause]
Our other two are Elise Adenbacher, preschool teacher, she's replacing Mrs. Rupier, and then I don't see her, Ellen Spansky, she's a foster candidate.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, we are here tonight, we are very excited as a Board of Education and a school district, because we are honoring our TRAP team who won the state championship two weeks ago? Am I right, two weeks ago? Very exciting. This is a program that started just three short years ago, and in that little bit of time, we've managed to be so successful that we win a state championship. And that is a tribute to the boys and girls who compete, and to the parents and coaches who have helped them along the way. And before we have the coaches come up and speak, I just would like to recognize those coaches and individuals who have helped this team be so successful. We have Mark Verlindy and Fred McCallmore, Alex MacArthur, George Frank, Terry Flannery, Larry Meidinger, Ron McVie, Rick Zolch, Ty Campbell, and Steve Wharton. And we are very grateful. One little note that I'm going to say, I was told in back when I was talking to the coaches, that there is a first-ever nationals competition that is being held July 12 through the 15th. So we are sending 24 of our TRAP kids to that competition, and it is the first ever, so probably when we win it, that'll be really exciting to know. We have great faith. So at this time, if Mr. Verlindy and Mr. McCallmore, if you want to come up, they're going to tell us a little bit about their team and how we got.
Coach, is this money? This is your start.
Good evening. We started this team back three years ago. When we first started, we had two weeks to get it together, get everything moving, because there's a deadline for registration, so we started two weeks prior and were able to squeeze it in. We started with 12 kids the first year, there was 13 teams, I think, wasn't there?
Thirteen schools, yes.
Yes, and that year, we ended up in different divisions. We did not take first, but we took second in state that year. The second year, we came with 23 kids, and the schools increased to about the same number, about 23. We went to state, we only took third. We worked hard, we didn't quite make it, but we took second in our division. Third year, we came in, now we have, we had 48 that started with the team. We lost two that didn't participate, so we were down to 46 kids this year. We took first in our division, and we took first in varsity at state. The kids that came through here, it's just kind of remarkable, I think, because out of all the kids that we've had coming into the TRAP league, it's just, there's been no problems, everything's been smooth working. It's just kind of like kind of a pleasure for us as coaches to teach these kids because they're so receptive, and to watch them start at a level and exceed way beyond our expectations for most part is just remarkable. We couldn't do it alone, obviously. Mark is on the board at Richmond Sportsman's Club, and with all the other coaches that we have incorporated, we're able to really streamline it and get kids through in like two hours or two and a half hours at the most when we shoot each final, which is twice a week. We'd never do this without the coaches, and the experience that the coaches are providing to the shooters is just irreplaceable, and it's really, it's really just great. When I first started this, I was wondering, how is this going to happen? And you know, I was just, with a few kids is one thing, but you could see that it was going to grow, and they told us they expected it to double every year until you get up to a level. So we're probably expecting next year that we'll be over 100 teams maybe. I'm thinking that it will be, because it's been doubling every year so far. It's just unbelievable. We're at a point where we're not sure as far as we might have to cut off the number of kids we take, but we're trying to keep open about it and accept as many as we possibly can, because it just seems like the kids, as they find out, the interest just grows.
You said an hour, right?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. We're honored that the school board is recognizing our shooters. Like I said, they're good kids, and it's just a pleasure to have. Like I said, they're good kids, and it's just a pleasure to have them here. So without wasting any more time, I can read their names.
We have certificates for each one of the kids, so when your name gets called, if you'll come up, and you'll get your certificate from Mr. Wamsley, and then we're going to stand here and we're going to shake your hands, okay?
Oh, one other thing, Alex? These are the trophies that you got, and you kind of brought them up, and I didn't even think about it, but this is our awards this year for our division and for the state. We'll have them here if anyone wants to look at them.
Alright, we're going to go alphabetically. Andrew Anderson. Hunter Askew. Roddy Bonamassa. Billy Fran and Luke Fran, I didn't see them, oh, they're. Danny Brunner. I didn't see Danny. Cole Hamwell. Hammer Cook and Corrick Cook. Darren Dubay. Zach Ellery. Anthony Ellis. Nick Bissler. Hannah Twain Zolci, she's not here, but.
His dad is?
Well, Derek Hutchins. Kevin Key. Brendan Kretinsky. Missy Devitt. Robert South. Brendan Malalowski. Aiden Mueller and John Mueller. Jordan O'Neal. Derek Furtle. Jacob Ryan. David Shadi. Zach Sellers. Hunter Sevner. Emma Slavnik. Remi Slavnik. Brady St. John. Blake Smith, and always not here, we all seen him, whoa. Cooper Stewart. Caleb Shapovich. Matthew Salto. Olivia Choi. Al Robley. Ty Wallace. Eddie Yeager.
Can we get, can we get all the team members to just come up one last time, stand in front here, so the TV cameras can see you all together? Come on up here, guys and girls. Just come right up front. So we can, one last time, do a good look at you. Come on, way up, stand in front here. Keep coming, keep coming, just right this side. All the way there, we go, right up there. Hold the team together for the. There they are, our state champions. Great job, thank you guys very much.
Alright, perfect, okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I just want to say one last thing, um, this team is self-funded, and they rely on all their sponsors to help this program. Without those sponsors, we couldn't do what we're, they couldn't do what we're doing, we're going to have to team, so. When we did the consent agenda, our new mechanic, Callan, is right here, he's coming to us with 27 years of experience. With Utica, of North.
Boigan. From Boigan, too.
So, he's, he met with Larry and I, and we're looking forward to him joining our team as well.
Welcome. Okay, now that excitement is over, we're going to move on to Superintendent Legislative Audit.
I do not have anything on the, from a legislative perspective, other than we're just waiting for all the bills to be signed and all the details to come out, but, um, as this is Director of Business, us can be outlined. We do anticipate $240. There is a line item in the budget for $25 per student enrolled in CT courses. Over the last several years, we've added CT courses, and, um, I think Mrs. Shawn retired to go through and do the light work to get those courses certified, our culinary arts, our television production class, EMT. So our hope is that those students will be able to get $20 because of those new programs that we've got. And just a reminder, we have our summer food serve program going at BB Street Park and at Lowly Elementary School for free breakfast and free lunch. You do not need to be a student of Richmond, anybody 18 years and under. If you show up, you're going to get a free breakfast and free lunch. So stop up there and play at the park or play on Lee's Park, and swing by and have a breakfast and lunch.
Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anyone have anything?
Um, I would just ask for, you know, the state, I think it was Mr. Bartels who mentioned it at our last board meeting. The state has come out with their new standards for history, social studies, and education. And there are some concerning changes, as far as I'm concerned, from what I have read. They are out there, you can see them online, and the state Board of Education is taking comments from the public until June 30th about the changes. So anybody can go online and read the changes, and anybody can voice their concerns, from what I have heard. The onsite public hearings, over the course of the last three weeks, attendance at those has just ballooned. They were having about two or three people show up, and now they're having 60 or 80. Particularly social studies teachers, college professors who are voicing great concerns with the changes that have happened. So, um, parents, go and look and see what the changes are. I ask for all of us to do the same thing, go look, see how it's being modified and changed, and then make some comments about what you see. It's important for us to do that.
Anybody else? No? Okay, next, moving on to a portion of our meeting for public comment. It is the time in our meeting that if there's anyone who would like to address the board, they may do so. There should be a piece of paper up there, you can put your name and phone number if you have a question that you need answered. It is not a question-answer period, you have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board?
Hello, my name's Amanda Kramer, and I just want to publicly express my thoughts tonight about the plan to eliminate busing to Treasure Friends daycare. I understand that this is to be voted on tonight, and I want you to listen to why I so strongly urge you to vote tonight to allow continuation of busing to Treasure Friends daycare. I happen to be able to sneak out of work tonight. This must have been an activity I've got, because it doesn't happen very often. I typically leave my house at 6:00 in the morning and don't get home till 8:30 at night on the days that I work. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Princeton for reading my letter last week, or last meeting, because I wasn't able to be here, and I didn't think that I would be able to be here tonight either. Standing here tonight, it's not a secret to many of you, that in the last year, my family has gone through a lot of changes. My girls, Kylie, yes, and Brenda Kramer. Their four, six, and eight, went through a major life change. Their father and I got divorced. Treasure Friends has been the stability that my girls have known since infants. Both their dads and I have jobs that have required us to be away from them for long hours, but they've had that stability, that they can go to Treasure Friends daycare. And it's their second home away from home. I stand here tonight because I don't want them to lose that stability. My youngest daughter, she is four, she doesn't attend school here yet, eventually she will. But, the issue is, that if the buses don't continue to daycare, my girls will be split up in different places, because I don't have the transportation. I know many of you know my family, and you think, well, she's got a lot of support. There's got to be a way that people can give to her kids from where they need to go. I do, but they already support me a lot. They get up at 5:30 in the morning to be at my house on the days that I work. They make dinner for my kids, and they get them ready for bed on nights that I work. So I think to all of you, as you vote tonight, it's not just my daughters that this is affecting. There are about six other families that go to Treasure Friends daycare that use a bus service. And, so there's about twelve children that it affects. And, I know one family really wanted to be here tonight, but they're out of state on vacation. So I'm representing everyone that goes to Treasure Friends. Please think about these children. I'd like to review the Senate proposal that Mr. Wamsley proposed about charging a fee for transportation to daycare. The owner, Stacy, is here today, and she has agreed that she would be willing to visit us. As a parent, I would be willing to contribute towards this fee. Could you take this into consideration? This could be a win-win for all of us. I respect all of you, and I know what a tough decision it is to make these budget decisions. I voted for many of you, as I know that I trust that you have the children's best interests in mind. I can hardly believe that dropping these children off at daycare would break our faith. I appreciate all of your time.
Anyone else? We will move on to our action items. The first one is the approval of the amendment to the Richmond Administrators Association contract.
This amendment addresses the staff that we talked about through the bunch of discussions regarding the administrative positions in the district, or within the district. The contract only opens the areas of this position, the matrix and the work calendar, or the salary matrix and work calendar.
There's a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and approve the amendments to the master agreement between Richmond Community Schools toward education, and Richmond Administrators Association has presented attached documentation.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? None? Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Kai?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, approval of fiscal year 2018 General Fund final budget and fiscal year 2019 General Fund original budget.
As presented during the 6:30 budget, truth and budget session regarding our budget, the fiscal year 18, which ends June 30th, we project to be approximately 160,000, using the fund balance, to shore up our expenses and our revenue. And the budget that's before you, with all the assumptions that we've talked about through the process, as well as the assumptions that Budget Director Sashat talked about for people, allocation, enrollment, our expenses equal our revenue, with the limit of our structural benefits.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and approve the final budget amendment for 2017.
budget amendment for the 2017-18 general fund and the 2018-19 original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Sure.
Brian, I think you've done an amazing job, as we heard in the budget during the balance of the budget, and I appreciate all the hard work you've done. I am strongly against one piece in the budget that we've discussed, and that is ending the transportation to Treasure Friends. I think, I don't think it's in the best interest of the kids to take that stability and not offer comparable service to what we have. So I, we've heard from a couple of people who say that they are against it. I would like some discussion on that, at least where I am, otherwise I don't feel like to go into the question.
You want what? You want what to happen?
Do you hear any viewpoint, if anybody has any different viewpoint, like from previous discussions, now hearing people speak and comment? Is everyone just still maintaining this in the best interest of our kids?
Well, I believe it's in the best interest of the school district, and I don't think that, and I hate the fact that we keep talking about what we're doing to treasured friends.
Sorry, business.
Okay, but this is what it, this is what it's all been, become about for our treasured friends. When in reality, this is a policy that came up last year. We had the discussion about the policy and whether we wanted to transport students to businesses. That's where it all came about. And so it fell into our discussion of the budget. So I, in the best interest of our district, I don't believe we should be transporting our students to businesses. That, my thoughts haven't changed. I've set that right from the beginning to put out there that there are people on the board that don't, don't care about our families and all of that. I think that's an unfortunate statement to say.
I think they don't care.
I didn't, I wait, hold on, let me finish. It is out there. There is that comment out there, and I don't think that's fair, because I think we care very much about everyone in our district. But sometimes you have to make decisions that are in the best interest of the district. And my opinion, that's this one, so. If you were looking for comment, there's.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your opinion. I guess I was just more looking to state. My position hasn't changed from before when we discussed it. So I did want Brian to know, I appreciate all the hard work he's put into the budget, because I know he did do a lot of work. I just can't support it because of this one.
Before I say anything else, is there anyone that wants to have any more discussion with what Sarah was asking?
I just envision if the policy is interpreted, that we can drop off at businesses. It opens us up to dropping off in all kinds of other places, not necessarily daycare. A parent could call and have a child dropped off anyplace. And I don't see us in the business of transporting in that way. I just don't see us being and having the resources to do that. So I'm looking at the big picture and don't, still don't see that it's in our best interest for parents to just call and have their children dropped off wherever. And if we do it for one, then we have to do it for anybody. Right? So if someone works at Kroger and they want their child dropped off where they, where they work, we have to start dropping off at Kroger too. You know what I mean? It opens up all of that.
And that's why I liked Brian's plan that he created the system. I thought that was a good idea.
Yeah, he did bring that to us, and there wasn't, there wasn't interest from the board for the fee system.
Yeah, no, I just, I appreciate that.
Anything else?
I just want to say with respect to the whole entire budget, to Brian and to Tammy, for the work that you've done, and for those of us sitting here on the board, some of us have been together for a while, and yes, in the last few years, did I think eight years ago we would ever get to the point where we would do things to get us to zero, to not have a fund deficit, and not have, to cut programs. We've added programs, and we've still managed to do that. So I think that that is commendable, and I really hope it's on the front page of The Voice, as it should be.
Especially what state funding has flatlocked, you know, and there has not been. Even though there's an increase, you see an increase, but when you compare it to where we were, flat movement from funding from the state. And so it's been incredible, really, to watch programming grow and have this happen. So, yeah, thank you.
Any others?
No, I appreciate the work they've put into the budget. I know that there's a lot of work to it, and I appreciate that as we come to the board meetings, it's outlined for us, and as we have adjusted and flexed our ideas of what we see the budget looking like, you've been able to do that quickly for us, and a lot of training there, so I appreciate that.
All right, it has been moved and supported. I will do a roll call. Tracy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah? And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of fiscal year 2018 food service final budget and fiscal year 2019 food service original budget.
You can see in the attached documentation, as well as what was presented during the 6:30 meeting, the final budget from food service, as well as the final expenditures from revenue expenditures. Food service is self-sustaining. I mean, we do not transfer money from, to general fund to support food service. And so I thank the directors of the past, our current director, Mr. Estrada, for maintaining that, as well as the dedicated food service employees who understand and take their job very seriously.
There's a sample resolution.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the final budget amendment for the 2017-18 food service fund and the 2018-19 original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of fiscal year 2018 debt fund final budget and fiscal year 2019 debt fund original budget.
This is regarding 5.5 mils that we levy to pay our debt. As you can see in the attached documentation, the revenues we receive from this mill and the expenses to pay that debt are to be accounted for.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2017-18 final debt fund budget and the 2018-19 original debt fund budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Second. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah? And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of state aid, state aid note loan cash flow borrow.
On the district, when, after July 1st, the district doesn't receive its first state aid payment until October. You actually receive 11 state aid payments. So there's a month that we still have expenses that go through, staff still have their salaries, many of them haven't spread over to the summer that we have to make payroll. So our cash flow becomes an issue of when, the timing of those state aid payments. We have been able to reduce over the past years the amount of money we've been required to borrow because of switching from a biweekly to a five-month pay. There still is a need because our fund balance isn't high enough to cover that hole for the state aid. So I'm asking the board to approve a state aid note authorizing up to $1.2 million from the State Finance Authority.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the resolution authorizing issuance of notes in anticipation of state school aid for up to $1.2 million through the Michigan Finance Authority State Aid Note Program as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
So what would have to shift in order for us to not have to, the majority, I mean, what, 90% probably, a school district in the state would have to do is borrow money to make payroll particularly.
Your fund balance would have to be, what, $1.2 million, that city and fund balance? We currently have 600.
Just under $700,000.
Just under $700,000. We'd have to have a million to city and fund balance if we're going to borrow, so we'd have it there to make payroll.
So the state adjusting their payment schedule would alter this?
Oh yeah, if they paid us 12 months.
Well, the other, the other thing is, our first payment for 18-19 will happen in October, October 20th. We are a quarter of the way through the year before we get a state aid.
Right, right. So we're mandated to have our budget done by June 30th, so we can start July 1st. But they don't have to give us any money until October 1st, right? Because their fiscal year starts differently than ours.
Correct.
So it costs us money, right? Costs us money.
Correct, because we don't have enough money in fund balance to cover those costs until we get a state aid. I think in the back, I believe, there was a cash flow. Can you see the month that we get our loan, that's what we need to borrow?
I think every year I make this frustration, so. You too, Tom. So I'm sorry that it's a repeat of appearance of that, but it is a true. The state just makes no sense that there would be an easy solution, where we would have to spend a lot of borrowing, like to get a spending plan.
Okay, it's been moved and supported and discussed. We'll do a roll call. Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Sarah? And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of 2018-19 district building school improvement plan.
At the last board meeting, these were presented before our district plan is due June 30th. Building plans are due by September 1st. Our plan is to submit all of them prior to June 30th, or the building shortly thereafter, so that when we come back in August, we're ready to go.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the district Richmond High School, Richmond Middle School, and Lilly Elementary School improvement plans as presented in the attached documentation.
Now Sarah? It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Other than thank you to those that worked and put this together, it's a lot of hard work, and it is appreciated. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of middle school standards based report cards and middle school grading policy revisions. We had this presentation at our last meeting, so there's a sample resolution.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the middle school to convert from traditional grading and according to standard case grading and according, as well as any changes to enforce my grading policy as presented in the attached document.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No, just another thank you. Lots of hard work went into making this transition be possible, and it will continue to be a work in progress, I know, for middle school staff. So it's exciting, I think, to make this adjustment, but I appreciate everybody involved in getting us through to this.
Excuse me, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of 2018-19 student athlete code of conduct handbook. Again, we had a presentation by Ms. Borwick and Mr. Reinhardt at our last meeting, and there's a sample resolution.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve proposed changes to the 2018-19 student athletic code of conduct handbook as presented in the attached documentation.
Second. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of 2018-19 athletic coaches handbook. Again, presentation from Ms. Borwick and Mr. Reinhardt at our last meeting. There's a sample resolution.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the proposed changes to the 2018-19 athletic coaches handbook as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, the second reading and approval of a board policy, policy 0143.1 through policy 8510. I don't know, I think we're all pretty good with what was presented. There was no questions or changes. Okay. Then I'm looking for a motion.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached board policies as presented on June 11, 2018 for a first reading, and June 25, 2018 for a second reading.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The next is approval of exempted non-union employee hourly rate and salary contracts, and.
Right, yeah, so I.
Tracy has a conflict.
I have a conflict of interest with two sections of this particular adjustment, so family member awards in those areas. So I think in the past, we've removed those.
We can just, we can just pull that, that's the preschool teachers aides, that part?
Preschool teacher aides, yes, and then childcare.
Childcare, okay. Okay.
Employees.
So we want to pull those two out, so I would look for a motion for all of the contracts with the exception, right now, the preschool teachers and aides and the childcare roles.
Just so the board know, these are all positions to the organization.
We gotta get a motion first.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent with the exception of the preschool and childcare employee sections, and approve the hourly rate of pay or salary increase for central office exempted non-union employees for 2018-19 school year as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Just as a, these are positions that are not in any bargaining minutes, and as you can see, this is not my position. That's separate, done by the board at different times, and these are everybody else in the organization that are not part of a bargaining minute.
Excuse me, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries.
Is this one that I?
Oh.
I can vote on this one.
Yes, you can vote on this one, sorry. Tracy?
I vote aye.
Okay, here we go. Already looking to my next thing. Okay. Motion carries. Now I'm looking for a motion for the central office exempted non-union employees for the childcare preschool.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the hourly rate of pay or salary increase for the preschool and childcare employees, non-union employees for the 2018-19 school year as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to do a roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah? Tracy?
Obstinate.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of 2018-19 MHSAA membership resolution.
This is an annual resolution that must be passed by the Board of Education for our athletes to participate in the MHSAA term and program.
I motion to approve and accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the Michigan High School Athletic Association membership resolution for the 2018-19 school year as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of preventative maintenance and web control support agreements with metro controls.
There's two components that we've done, had in the past. One is the web control, it's a system. It allows us to have the upcoming maintenance and training, as well as having the latest system as different versions come out. The second piece, I don't anticipate we're going to use this whole amount with the new ABM contract, but I don't want to leave us hanging as we start the contract and not have some type of support, so I'm recommending doing both agreements, with the potential of maintenance support may not even be its full agreement for this school year as we evolve to a new ABM. We're still going to maintain this. got maintenance.
If there's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with that controls incorporated for preventative maintenance and web control support for which funding from the two thousand eighteen nineteen general fund is presented in the attached documentation as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call. Sarah.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of the contract with AIS for heavy operating equipment course at the high school.
This is our annual contract with AIS. We're looking at offering two sections, zero and first, and second and third hour. We are expanding to do a partnership with Monss Cruz District to bring in some students from Monss Cruz to become part of this program. As I mentioned in the backup, any other Richmond students are in the program barring a scheduling conflict that would prevent them. So Richmond students have first priority. We do have some of our MAID students that are covered in part of the now Monss Cruz.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement with AIS for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year to offer heavy operating equipment course for which funding from the two thousand eighteen nineteen general fund is authorized.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call. Kyle.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of contract with the city of Richmond for television and broadcast media course at the high school.
This is our second piece. We're going into our third year of this program. With the city of Richmond, supported by the city council, we're going to continue offering the television production one and two courses at the high school.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with the city of Richmond for television and broadcast media course for which funding from the two thousand eighteen nineteen general fund is authorized as presented in the attached documentation. All state requirements shall be met for FTE funding and CTE components.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call. Tracy.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of contract with Richmond Lennox Ambulatory Services for the EMT course at the high school.
This is also the beginning of our third year with this program. We finished this last year with the board role. This year, we have about eighteen students that are registered for the course.
Did you say eighteen?
Eighteen, so we are going to increase the participation. Now, if you recall, two of our students passed the national certification, and being once on their eighteen birthday are fully licensed. This would enter into agreement to continue that program and offer that option for students at the high school.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with Richmond Lennox Ambulatory Services for literacy and medical technician course for which funding from the two thousand eighteen nineteen general fund is authorized as presented in the attached documentation. All state requirements shall be met for that.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call. Sarah. Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of middle school gymnasium sound system.
Couple weeks ago, or a couple months ago, I brought to the board the sale of our last series of the bond, which is approximately nine hundred ninety thousand dollars, and that was a line item for the middle school sound system. We replaced the sound systems in other gymnasium, media centers, auditoriums, etc. This was one did not get done in the last one, so this would be installing the same type of system that we have at the other place.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of a middle school gymnasium sound system from SoundCom in an amount not exceeding fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars plus a ten percent contingency for unknown site conditions for which funding from the two thousand thirteen voter approved bond is authorized as outlined in the attached documentation.
Second. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Other than hooray. You go to the middle school and you can hear stuff. Now that'll be great.
This one, once the PO is issued, it'll probably be installed roughly in August. Should be there before we start.
Excellent. Okay, I'm going to do a roll call. Kyle.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Last, approval of absolute software.
When the district launched its one-to-one initiative, it lasted three years ago. We put an RPL for laptops, and on that was a software, part of what came with the laptop for three years was a software system called Absolute Software. The software allows us to track computers if they've lost. It allows us to shut down the computer if they've lost and erase any information, especially if they have student information on the computer. With the three years expiring in the original bid, this now becomes an expense as we do for the one-to-one initiatives. We continue to have this software to protect our students, especially if the laptop is lost, to be able to eliminate personal head file operations on that laptop. This month has been budgeted in the FY nineteen budget. It'll be a line item going forward. It wants to be a one-to-one.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of Absolute Software of a total of twenty seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents for which funding is authorized as outlined in the attached documentation.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, as I think just about everyone knows, we had a board member who had to resign, Ryan Edberg. He and his family moved out of Richmond, so he could no longer be on the Board of Education with us, so we put out a posting looking for board member, and we are going to be interviewing two candidates this evening. We are gonna... We have two candidates tonight. Our first candidate is Angela Pacino, and I know she's back there. She wants to come up. And Janie? Our other candidate, her name is Sue Boyd, and she is going to step out into the hall. Right now, as we ask questions, we are going to ask questions of the candidate, and we obviously ask the same questions, so we're gonna have Sue step outside, and then we'll call you when we're ready. Okay, good? Okay. Thought I was going to get a look. Nope, nope. Okay. Do I move the table a bit so it's not, so that the sun's not...
Right in your eyes?
Like a spot.
Right. Does that work?
I think it's over here.
Okay, that would probably be a little too, yeah. I'm getting out of one of my backpack, anyone? So we have, as I explained to you on the phone, we have questions, board members that we're going to ask, and we're going to start with having you introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself. We know from the information we've received, but for those that are out in the audience, why you're interested in being on the board, and then we have questions for you to answer, and we may do some follow-up questions as you're answering. Then, when we're done, we'll give you a few moments if you would like to say something at the very end of the interview, and then when you're done, then we'll have Sue Boyd come in, and we will interview her, and as I said to you, you are welcome to stay because it's an open meeting. Through her interview, she just can't be here for years to hear the questions.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So let's start with introducing yourself and telling us a little bit about yourself, please.
Hello, board members, members of the board, students, faculty and community members. I know there's not many students here at the moment, but for those of you who don't know me, I am Angela Pacino, and I'm very excited to have the opportunity to interview for a position on the board. I've had a career working in business management and customer service for twenty years, and I feel that the knowledge and experience I have gained will be helpful serving on the board. I have two children who have completed Lee Elementary and will be attending Richmond Middle School in the fall of two thousand eighteen. I have a third child who will attend Lee Elementary in the fall of two thousand nineteen. Throughout the years, I have been lucky to have the opportunity to volunteer for activities and events in the district, and it's made me realize how much I love working with children. I have now decided to pursue a career in education. I am currently working for edge of staff in the Richmond Community School District as a substitute lunch aid, food service employee, paraprofessional, and preschool and daycareing. I am currently completing my bachelor's of science in elementary education, and upon completion in two thousand twenty, I hope to be able to have the opportunity to become a teacher in the Richmond Community School District. But until I graduate, I am willing to be dedicated full-time as a contributing board member. I feel that I may offer a unique perspective for the board and cannot wait to share my ideas regarding student safety, student activities, student enrollment, and generating funds for our district. I am happy to answer any questions I can make. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll start.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So we'll just kind of go around and ask some questions to tell people that said, do you see yourself first and foremost as a representative of the community or as a representative of the school system?
It would have, that's a difficult question for me to answer because I feel the two of them are one and the same, being that we are Richmond Community School District. But I think fore and foremost, the most important thing to me would be the students. Taking care of the students, being their advocate when they don't have.
Thank you. Okay, what do you think are the district's greatest needs right now, and how do you think they should be addressed?
Well, as we all know, probably one of our greatest needs is to generate funds. I first originally was interested in joining the school board because of all the ideas I have for the students, and then realized that there's not many we can do for, you know, operating at the funds we are. I feel one of the great initiatives could be was maybe to install solar panels. DT is now offering zero installation for residents in Macomb County, so it may be something that we could look into to see if that would happen for our school. It can even be a part of our green initiative. It could also help the school district save on their electricity bill and even generate funds in the future. I'd also like to look over the lunch food service program. I know there are some children that qualify for the preschool lunch program, and paper work has not been filled out, and then we are therefore not receiving funds from the state. I think it would be interesting if we could maybe have a workshop or some kind of event where we could bring in community members or parents and students that would qualify or be interested in that program to help them fill out necessary forms, because sometimes that may, they just may not know how to proceed. I also feel that, of course, we could look into getting a millage passed. We could apply mills, get a millage for our debt, for our sinking fund, and for operations. I'm not sure, you know, sometimes that goes over so well with our voters, of course raising taxes, but I really do feel that our community is very interested in helping the school district and seeing it succeed. So I feel the voters, you know, if we came up with a proposal that really met our school needs, that to address maybe certain issues that I feel like as parking, maybe some kind of new parking system or something like that, so we could definitely generate. When you do write, of course, we know a millage has to have some kind of standing. You got to say we want money, so it would take some work, and I'd be willing to do anything. I've already done some research on millage writing, so I'd love to look into that for you. I'd also like to talk about maybe looking into combining all three schools as a booster club. I know currently we have three different PTOs, or two different PTOs, and then a booster and a high school. Maybe we could try and get all three of them to maybe work together somehow. I know that in elementary alone, they can raise tens of thousands of dollars. That alone, if we could do all three schools across, we are currently a hundred bucks, a thousand dollars under budget, I really feel that in our community, we would rally and help us get out of this. I really do feel and believe that, and I'd be willing to talk to community members, walk out there door to door, tell them where we stand, tell them what is important, because sometimes it just comes down to them not knowing, not understanding, not being educated about these certain issues. So I have so many, this is six years in the works of ideas, so of course I would also like to address the state. I look a bunch of that in my letter, and I feel that that really is what and where we need to start. We need to look at the state, if I could get a pool of funding from them. And I know, as Mrs. Bartel talked earlier, about trying to have changes, they're talking about changes with history and social studies and such, and just generally trying to raise state funding. I think it would be interesting if we could maybe find yet again another workshop to explain to our community, make a standard form letter, and bring our community together to try and approach our state. Give them an easy way to communicate with the state. Not everybody has the time to go home and make a letter and et cetera. We could enable them a little more to communicate with their state. I think that would really go a long way.
Do you know that we already do that? And Mr. Wamsley already does that, gives information constantly at board meetings and on the website about...
I do not say you do that.
Yes, absolutely.
I think you guys are doing a great job.
No, I'm just asking. You're talking about doing it. I just want to make sure that you know that we do.
Let me tell you to do that. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Just thought maybe you might need some water.
Are we good?
Yeah.
I think all of us sitting on this side of the table have gone through the experience of the transition of becoming a board member, and how your kind of walk or journey into the Kroger store all of a sudden becomes a very different experience once you're sitting on this side of the table. And so it shifts within your social group, within your family. Like, I have to abstain because I have a family member who works in the district, and so our conversations have limits now about what we can talk about, what we can't talk about, about work, her work at home. How easy does that adjustment sound to you, sitting on that side of the table, and how willing would you be to make those kind of boundaries that are necessary to do the job sitting here on this side of the table well?
Well, I feel very confident in that I could definitely, you know, protect us, you know, as a group and stay, not let the community in if we do have disagreements or such. Space, you know, bonded together as a school board. I know that's extremely important. I already run into many students, parents, and community members throughout Kroger and throughout the town. I've been a member of this community since ninety-seven, so I see many people I know, and I'm already, you know, explaining to them when they come to me with complaints about an issue with the school system, and I'm already, I feel a strong advocate for our school system and explaining in a most delicate matter and trying not to hurt feelings as I can, you know, the opinion of the board. Because sometimes I think that people don't really understand that it's not that that was the best decision, or that was the best decision, not that that's the decision everybody always wants to make, and I try to let them know that, and I've been doing that for the last few years, because I'm very proud, very proud to be a parent sending my children to Richmond Community Schools.
What do you see as the role between the superintendent and the Board of Education? How do you see that role?
Well, I feel the superintendent is, from what I have gathered watching school board meetings over the last few years, he seems to be the person that collects the information from legislative areas and throughout the community, and just lets the board, gives the board's recommendations upon, after investigating these areas, and pretty much leaving it in the board's hands. I don't feel, of course, he has no, he just does the research for the board. I don't feel, of course, he has no, he just does the research for the board, not to mention taking care of the school and the daily functions, of course. But I feel he does a great job at researching for our school, Mr. Wamsley. And he has been letting all of the board members know the changes that are going on with the state and other areas and making recommendations to the best that we can.
Do you, do you understand the role between the board and the superintendent? That the, who's, who's in charge of the district?
The board is in charge of the district.
Absolutely. Now, the superintendent is in charge of the school district.
But the board is in charge of making decisions.
We don't run the school district.
But you make some decisions for the district.
He is the operational manager, absolutely in charge of the district in that way.
He's in charge in all ways. There's no, no board member is in charge of anything except the superintendent. Okay, so then he, okay, so when I, the role, because sometimes it gets, it gets very clouded when you, when you are not on the board. I think everyone experiences that when you first get on the board, of not understanding what the role is of the board member and the role of the superintendent. So that's why I always ask that question. Because the average person, none of us, I think, really, I don't think you really get it totally until you're sitting here on the board, that we don't, we don't run the school district.
Right.
Piggybacking a little bit on Tracy's questions, or question. Some decisions that the board makes are not always popular in the community and we've done a few in the last couple of years. How would you handle a situation if approached by an unhappy community member?
Well, I would first try to explain our point of view, what our point of view, where we're coming from. Most of the time, like I said, as I've encountered, it's often that they do not understand the other things that will affect our decision-making decision. Often is it just only isolated to that incident that will have effects for the rest of others' decisions and maybe the district? And I would just explain to them that we are doing the best that we can to guarantee that our students are getting the best education that they can possibly get. I mean, I've been working customer service, like I said, for a very long time and I know that you just stick in there and you explain and you try to really understand that often they'll understand your side as well. And that's, that's what I would try to do.
So working at a board, we have to work as a team and we're trying to communicate with each other different issues that are coming across the table. What would your coworkers say is your greatest strength as a team member?
I, I would hope that my coworkers would say that my greatest strength as a team member is really being part of the team. I, I do not feel any one job is one person's job. I feel that we're all in this together. If somebody needs help with this or somebody needs help with that, I'm not the type of person to ever say that's not my job or that's not my department. I, I'm definitely excited to help others and to work as a team to get a job, get the job done. And it's interesting that you say that because I really do feel that the majority of my coworkers would say that one of my best assets would be that I am a team player and that I love to be a part of the team and rally our team together and make things happen.
Chris kind of took mine about working as a team, so I'm going to jump ship a little bit and ask, how much do you feel working as a substitute in the district might be a conflict for you to be on the board? I mean, do you still plan on being a substitute in the district or are you planning on abandoning that to be on board?
I would love to keep my position as a sub in the district. I do understand that it's a conflict of interest and I would be willing to refrain from voting on budget issues or issues that pertain to those positions that I am currently subbing for. I see here that you pretty much approve the budget for most of those positions for the next couple of years, for the next year's school year. So that's not an issue that I would have for the first year. But I would be willing to refrain during that. And I'd even consider if it was necessary and the board felt it was necessary, that I could postpone working for this district until after my term's over.
Because you know, I did, I explained to you on the phone, you can't be, you can't be appointed, if you're appointed, you can't be an employee of the school district.
Because I, okay.
And we explained, you and I talked all about the edge of staff and that's who you work for.
Yes, and I did some research and according to state legislation, as long as I let the board know before voting that I have a conflict of interest, I should still be able to serve on the board. I have a couple of things if you want to maybe address if I get the position, right?
Right.
So that maybe we can... I understand that's your policy, but I do understand that there's a few other members on the board that do also have conflicts of interest and that seems to be working okay.
There's, there's no one on the board that is an employee of the school district.
No, but you're, you cannot vote on MISD situations because you have a conflict of interest there and it seems to work okay.
But the difference is, that's voting on the MISD budget that each school district is required to do. So when that vote comes here, no, I cannot vote on it because I am an employee of the ISD and so I benefit from that. That is not even in the realm of being an employee of the school district.
But I'm an employee of edge of staff, subbing in the school district. I'm not a direct hire for the school district and I just, in my opinion, it sounds very similar to the situation with...
Okay, but it's not. So we'll just leave it at that. I explained it to you on the phone, it's not.
Okay.
Can I ask a more subtle question?
Sure.
So being in the school, like if you were subbing in one of those areas that you mentioned, do you not feel like that might be a conflict as you're in the school and you're working with the people that you may or may not be making decisions about later since you're working and dealing with them?
No, I don't think that would be an issue in any way. Everybody that I've worked hand in hand with are doing a great job. I don't understand how that would, you know, in any way. If anything, I think it's given me a very unique position to see in the certain areas where the school district is really established and in certain areas where maybe we need to, you know, put a little more effort into. Like I said, I'm a team player. You can ask any of the faculty that I have been working for. I'm pretty much majority of the time defending the board and the school district and even to them. I'm not afraid to tell my friends my problems, my opinions, just stick true to my convictions. So I don't feel that would be...
Can you just share a little bit about how you see public education in its relationship to the bigger, broader community? And it's public education and its role in the community?
Well, I feel it's very important, of course, because we would like many of our students to come back and be community members for our community in the future. So it's definitely important to provide them with quality education so that they maybe one day hopefully come back and help us. I do see in the long run, after reading the collaborative initiative from the state, that they definitely would like to lean towards more skilled trades-type jobs. And I think it would be interesting if, we've already done it, as you guys mentioned, the IAS construction building. But there are many other avenues within this area that we could maybe explore as far as agriculture goes or now with the board being a part of our, you know, community. And the wonderful culinary arts program, we could look into maybe some of our restaurants in town to, and help the students prepare for a different kind of career. Not, not everybody is designed for college and sometimes people, it's not that they're not designed for college, they just need to enter the workforce earlier. And, and I feel that that's something that we should look for and maybe even working on some adult ed programs.
Do you know what our current budget is for Richmond Community Schools? And what the process is for reaching a budget for a fiscal school year? When putting a budget together, what are ways to prioritize spending in your opinion?
Well, of course, I know in the budget, in our current actual school budget, you know, every school budget, the majority of our expense is teachers and people. And it's unfortunate that that's often what we look for or start moving around when we go to think about budget, you know, savings. I do feel that, you know, right now, you know, we are a hundred thousand dollars, underfunded. And it's been going like that for like the last three years, I think. At the end of every budget talk, we're kind of almost on the level of the deficit, the 5% deficit there. And like I said, I really feel a lot of our funding needs to come from the state. We need to trust more of that. And I know that currently 80% comes from state funding and 20% comes from local funding. And I think it would be really interesting if we could maybe like educate our community members a little bit more on how important it really is to shop local and how important it is because that is going towards our school district. And I know right now we're getting, we're getting 7,000, 7,800 per student. And the trend looks like it's going up. We have been increasing over the last couple of years. But like Mrs. Bartel said there, it's definitely not enough. But with the collaborative research and a lot of the other things, it does sound like the state is recognizing that we're having budget problems. And I really feel that over the next few years, they may start to see where actually we would be having, you know, more funding given to us from the state.
Only that were true. That would be amazing.
Sitting at this table, we have discussions, obviously, every meeting, a difference of opinions. What, what experience do you have in groups where you might have had to work with people that didn't necessarily always see your way and you had to kind of get along?
Well, it's interesting you say that. I was very involved last year at Lee Elementary PTO. It was definitely an interesting group of ladies with lots of opinions and strong personalities. And while I think sometimes we really did disagree, and even I disagreed with some of the members, I feel that in the end, we made the best solution we could. And after that was done, I proceeded to support, you know, the fellow member in whatever they were committed to doing and help see, you know, whatever ideas they had come to form fruition. I actually, you know, I'm that type of person that will argue for my point of view all the way up until the end. But once a decision's been made, I will support that it's a decision of the group and do whatever I can to make that happen to them.
So you mentioned some specific roles that you had, you had a lot of them, but some specific goals that you've had. Could you narrow it down to what, what are, like if you had one issue that you needed to have for your voice to be on the board, what would be that one issue? Is it funding?
I don't necessarily feel it's funding. I feel my main issue would be, I mean, right here on the top of my notes, of course, the student safety and student activities and all these great ideas that I really have. And, you know, I would have, of course, researched funding because all those ideas come from the school. So when I came here two years ago for the interview, we had discussed about how the budget was such an issue that new ideas aren't really able to be done right now. So over the last two years, in order to get all these great ideas for the students, I have done a lot of research on how to generate funds and would like to share some and be willing to do the work and the research and the writing that requires to get some of the funds. But honestly, I feel that student safety and student activities and, you know, student education is my priority. And I would love to be an advocate for those students that don't always necessarily have a parent advocate.
So what is one of the strong things that you think are happening in our school district? What's one of the strongest things that you think are happening?
Well, I think one of the strongest things, I thought, is all the interesting, unique clubs that our school district has to offer. I mean, by the time I was a sophomore in high school, I went to seven different schools. And I have never seen all the interesting programs that the school offers, just as we saw the track team. That is just amazing. The AIS construction. These things that have been going on for years, for years, three years now. And many community members, even today, I saw that they haven't heard about the track team. And then I also heard a few board meetings ago that you guys were talking about real school question. And that's targeting, you know, and the robotics club. All these very interesting clubs that go beyond just sports, go beyond just quieting, go beyond just ban and like the DECA and in many other state-recognized programs that we have throughout the district. I, I would love to do some marketing or just some, to let our, you know, our school district and beyond know all those great programs.
Our motto is guaranteed learning for all students. What does that mean to you?
Well, that means to me to make sure that all students are getting the education they deserve. Sometimes I feel that that may not be the case. I was very happy to hear that they're going to now a full-time special education. It was mentioned tonight, some half-time special education will have full-time special education. I feel that currently, the student is changing. Student is different than it was kind of 15 years ago. We need to figure out a new way to teach these children. We have ADHD and other issues that are on the rise. We have a new child, a new type of student that is more technology savvy than most of us adults. And with all this information and processing and all these other facts, you know, motion things that they're doing, I think we as a district, we as a state, you know, need to start looking at how our curriculum, how we are addressing teaching these children. Because not only are the children that have, you know, certain special needs, you know, that they're having a problem sometimes in class, we often forget about all those other children. When we have a ratio of five special needs children in one classroom, I think sometimes we forget how difficult it is for those other kids as well. So I think there's many issues, you know, like Mrs. Powers from the elementary, she introduced moving chairs or stand-up desks and different initiatives like that that, and I don't know if you remember, a few years ago, there was a motors, motor moms. They would go around from classroom to classroom and get the kids to throw a ball and do multiplications as you're doing it, or throw a ball and, you know, start spelling words and stuff like that at an early age and, you know, integrating movement with learning. And I think that's really what we need to start looking for as our children are changing and becoming different students.
I just got to go back to what you said about special ed. What are we doing now?
I thought I saw earlier, because I made a little note, earlier you were talking here about, Wamsley was, he said, I think that you're going from half-time special education to full-time.
BCS, two half-day programs.
I was thinking the whole special ed program.
Yes, and I think that's great. I mean, I misunderstood. Or maybe I wouldn't, yeah.
No, no, I get it now. Okay. All right, thank you. That's all our questions.
Thank you for the time.
Yeah, do you have anything that you want to say finishing up?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I could go for hours, of course. I'm very eager to get this position and hope that we can talk for hours about the ideas and the future of this district. I'm very excited. I have, like I said, three children. And we're proudly blue and it's... And it's a great time, I think, in Richmond. And I just think we need to keep reminding everybody that state, or the funding budget issues are the problem of state. That's where our problem is. And stop, you know, mistaking of what the budget costs. And I think we'll get there. I think we're all starting to really rally as a community. I know, like you said, this, over the last few years, there has been hard decisions that the board has had to make. And I think you guys are doing the best job that you can. It's not easy to, you know, please everyone. And we sure can't. Nobody can please everyone. And I just hope and I think and I believe you are all making the best decisions for our students. And I just hope to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Sue Boyd. And Sue, we have some questions that we're going to ask each one of us and there might be some follow-up questions as we go along. We're asking the same questions of you that we asked of the prior candidate. And we're going to start out with, we have your information. We've read about you, but if you can tell us a little bit more about yourself for the benefit of the people that are here and why you're interested in the role.
Well, I've lived in the Richmond community since the early 70s. My family relocated from Detroit area when I was in middle school. I attended Richmond Middle School. The first year, my family moved into the area. And then I, my parents wanted me to go to St. Augustine, so I went to St. Augustine for a couple of years and then went to Richmond High School. Went away to college, came back to the community that, I married somebody from Richmond and came back to the community after we went to college and made Richmond our home. And we raised our children here and they are Richmond graduates as well. When I graduated from college, I went into higher ed. My whole entire career has been in higher education. Currently, I work at Macomb Community College. I've been at Macomb for 13 years. Prior to working at Macomb, I worked at St. Clair County Community College. Had a lot of student services experience. You have my resume in front of you. I, you know, I don't know what to say. I think that, I think higher ed will complement, you know, my experience in higher ed and complement some of the contribution I think I could make to the board, which was why I was interested. I also saw this as an opportunity to see what it was like. I know I've been approached a couple of different times to consider running as a board, but I just wasn't interested in a six-year commitment, running an election and, you know, trying to do it when I wasn't sure. And so when this opportunity came up, I thought it would be a great opportunity to see, you know, what it would be like, what I would think of it and give me a really fair shakeout of what it would be like to be a board member. In my job at the college, I interact with our board trustees a lot. We go to board meetings and it's kind of interesting to, it would be interesting for me to be on the other side of the fence, to be quite honest. Why do I want to do this? That was one of them. Another reason is, is I like to be involved. I volunteer a lot. I like to give back. And I saw this as another opportunity to do that as well. And that touches on a lot of everything.
Good, thank you.
All right, we're going to start. Welcome. We're all going to ask questions. I'll go, Robyn, welcome, and I will start. Do you see yourself first as foremost as a representative of the community or as a representative of the school system?
I think that's both, I would have to say both. Because we're part of the community, but we, as a board member, we're responsible for the school. So I think, I think my, it's twofold. I think it's both.
What do you think some of the district's greatest needs are right now and how would you address them?
Well, I think right now your greatest need is why I'm a principal. I think you need to fill that role. I think being financially stable is another important thing. And probably those are the first two things that come to mind that I think are important. Working right now, who do you guys think?
So taking on the role of being on this side of the table and beside the fence, I think, is what you said. You have a view in a different place in the community. Like I shared earlier, you know, the walk into the Kroger store, the groceries completely changes once you're sitting here. And, you know, I have, you know, my sister works in the district. And so she and I have to change our conversations because I sit here and she's an employee of the district. And you just have to change in your social group about what you can talk about and what you don't, you know, all that. So I'm curious about how comfortable you would feel with that? What that feels like to hear that that's true, you know, the adjustment that you have to make? Can you just comment a little bit about that?
Well, I think I expected that because I experienced that in my current role. Except I'm embedded in the county that I work in. I'm just not embedded in the community quite the way you've just described. You know, in my role at the college, as a matter of fact, when I found out that this was going to be a public forum, I went, oh my God, I have to tell my boss what I'm doing right now because it'll be out there that this is what I'm doing. So I think I've experienced that already. I think I get it. I think it'll be a different experience being in the community that I live, my family is in. And so that was one of the things I think I was going to try out, to be quite honest. What, how different is that going to be exactly? And I have a feel for having that occur differently than what I'm used to right now in my current role.
So you mentioned you feel like that happens now. Can you talk a little bit more about how you knew for that?
Well, you know, right now, I'm the dean, one of the deans at the college. Macomb is the third largest college in the state of Michigan right now. The only schools that are bigger than us are Michigan State and University of Michigan. There's some statistics that have gone through. So when I read that, that really puts a different perspective on things. A lot of times people appear at community college and they think small. And we're quite large. In my role at the college, there are seven deans and seven vice presidents and a president. So I'm privileged to a lot of information. One of my responsibilities is also student conduct. So I have a lot of very highly confidential information where I'm suspending students. I have information on what's going on with students that has to be highly confidential. I work quite closely with our legal department in making those things happen. So I'm used to dealing with highly sensitive, highly confidential information. How I deal with that is like if I run into one of the students I suspended in Kroger's, you know, I try to just interact with them as Clyde of Kroger and not as the dean at the college. There has to be a differentiation when we're in our home territory or it makes everybody uncomfortable. Sometimes you run into people and they duck their head and run the other way. And that's okay too. It's really whatever they're going to feel comfortable doing. But I don't talk about business and I'm not going to acknowledge it. Usually, I don't acknowledge when I know that they're from the college because you don't know where the other person is coming from at that point. So I don't know if that's giving you a better sense of how I've encountered it already, but I do. I run into a lot of people that I know through work and in my home life, if you will, and really just taking them for what they're willing to do. Sometimes they've approached me and asked me things about work and I try to talk, tell them that, you know, why don't we talk about this when we're back at the college? I'd be happy to answer your questions, you know, trying to maintain their level, if you will, of confidentiality. Because talking about it in public like that's not always really good.
Kind of going along with that. Like a lot of us up here, we're in different places in the community. And sometimes we make decisions up here that aren't always popular. And in the community, when we're out and about, you might be approached by someone that's not necessarily happy with something that's been decided. How comfortable or how would you handle a situation like that?
Well, I think it depends on the situation, you know. I know at what point we are as a board as to what the discussion is. Is it, is it been public discussion so that I can have a public conversation, if you will, with that individual? Or is it something that's still not public? I guess is how I would say that. So how I would handle it would depend on a lot of those things. You know, if I'm approached and asked in a respectful manner what's going on, I would probably reciprocate that conversation as appropriate. If the person approached me and they were out of control, out of hand, inappropriate, I try to describe something that could result of somebody who's very passionate about something they're not happy about, then I would probably indicate to them that, you know, I can't talk to you about this right now. I can talk to you about it here. If you want to talk to me later about it, I would be happy to. But right now is not appropriate. And I would probably go off in more detail depending on the situation in that case.
But people being unhappy with you doesn't make you uncomfortable?
Sorry, that's my job. You know, I think it'll be more intense as a board member, but I'm used to people not being happy with me because I have to make some hard decisions in the role that I hold at the college. It's not anything I strive to do on a regular basis, but I can handle it, yeah.
What do you see as the role between the superintendent and the board of education?
I think it's the role of the superintendent to keep the board informed about what is going on at the school level and to help give us the information that the board would be to make decisions on the stuff that's coming in front of us. I see that relationship being open and honest and strong so that that communication can occur. I think it's important to be strong with the superintendent and the board in order to do that. But I also feel like there's got to be a respect level going back and forth. So if there's disagreements, questions, that interaction can still be conducive to what we have to do as a board and to what superintendent has to do. So I think it has to be a pretty close one.
What do you see as a specific goal that you would have for yourself in meeting the role? I'm sorry, let me start over. If selected, what goals would you have for yourself in meeting the role of a school board member?
My goal would be to learn the position. My goal would be to understand what would be expected of me and to get a better idea of what a board is for a K-12 system and learn that role. So I think my goal would be learning initially.
So you mentioned earlier, kind of testing this out, kind of seeing if it's something that you might be interested in long-term. I assume you're talking about people like putting your name into the election and filing. Is that something that you would consider, knowing the deadline is, I believe, July 24th? And we don't think in July, so you won't have a lot of time to really, you know, get a real, a good feel for it. But is that something you feel like you would want to run in the election and kind of try it out without really having experience? Really getting a feel for it?
You know, I asked Margaret that question as well because I was a little caught off guard with the turnaround on that. So I guess I wouldn't step forward if I wouldn't be interested in considering it. But I would explain that there's some other options. If I didn't necessarily file in July, I could be a write-in, you know. So there was a possibility of some more trying out. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I don't, I hate to sound so, I don't know, but I don't know what I don't know. And I'm trying to remain open-minded on it all. My role at the college is going to be very time-consuming. And one of the other questions I asked was about the time commitment, the meetings. And so I'm trying to get my arms around all of that as quickly as possible to possibly meet that deadline. And if not, the other option of considering being a write-in.
Are late nights usually a problem with meetings or are they a week?
No.
Pretty late sometimes.
Yeah, no, I, no, it's not.
So describe a little bit about what you think the role or the, what part does public education play in the bigger picture of the whole community?
I think it, I think it's the root of the economic role. I think that education is key to a lot of things. I think that the stronger the system is, the stronger the students that go through it is. And the stronger they are, the stronger they are in the work community. So I think it's very important. I don't know if that answered your question?
Do you know what our current budget is for Richmond Community Schools? And what the process is for reaching a budget for a fiscal school year? And when putting a budget together, what are ways to prioritize spending in your opinion?
I am not familiar with the budget, that you have. I am familiar with the budget process. I, at my job at Macomb, my role is to design, develop, maintain the budget. I present to my vice president what my division needs for budgets. And usually, we try to do a zero-based budgeting so that we explain what we need, what we're using it for, and then bring it forth to the vice president, who then brings it forth to the budget office and then to the board for approval. I'm very familiar with that process. I will learn what this process is, but I am not familiar with it. I don't know what the budget is. I, quite frankly, didn't even look it up.
That average person doesn't know. And the budget process is very good here. And when you talk about transparency and that, there's a lot of work that goes into it to put it together. Ryan does a very good job in giving us the information that we need to put a budget together, approve a budget.
I think there was a question or about how?
I was just going to say, I don't, I think there's a second part.
Oh, ways to prioritize spending.
Ways to prioritize spending.
Well, I think you have to look at what are the needs of the school district? And as far as prioritizing, you know, I think you have to start looking at the cost involved of running the organization. And then you have to look at what are some of the things that complement the running of the organization? And you kind of have to start prioritizing in that way depending on how much money's in the pot. And so we're here because of students. We're here because of what, they're part of our organization. So what does it take to keep them there? What does it take to run them, the school, so that they're there? I think that's the biggest priority. And then complementing those afterwards to round their education out. What are the costs from that involvement? How do you bring that to the table? How do you balance it? And hopefully, you have a balanced budget. You have a budget that can support what the goals of the school are. And you bring that together. And prioritizing would depend on that. It would also depend on some funding that you get. I don't know, I don't feel like I'm making sense right now. There's so many factors, I think, that depend on all of this. And you bring that all together to make a decision. I think it's hard for me to sit here and talk about it in general terms, you know, whether it's looking at a budget. I've done those things before and I understand it's not always easy. I also. Strengths of both, because I think they're both very strong here. That's a lot that are very vested in the community.
Nice to see them so passionate about the kids and the students and priorities in the right spot.
With that being said, is there someone that is interested in making a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sue Boyd to the term ending December 31st, 2018, for the School Board of Richmond.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? None? Okay. It has been moved and supported and no discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Sue. Angela, we thank you for your time. Very much appreciate it. And.
May I make a statement?
Uh, no, you can't. Sorry.
Okay, so thank you. Say it three times.
Yep. Sue, if you want to come forward, I think we're going to do a, we're going to swear you in so that there's a little bit of orientation and that kind of stuff. We can't do those kind of things unless you're officially a board member.
Right hand, repeat after me. Hi, Susan Boyd.
Hi, Susan Boyd.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Member of the Board of Education.
Member of the Board of Education.
Of Richmond Community Schools.
Of Richmond Community Schools.
Macomb and St. Clair Counties.
Macomb and St. Clair Counties.
Michigan according to the best of my abilities.
Michigan according to the best of my abilities.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned at 9:03 PM. And we do not have another meeting until August. So have a great summer, everybody. Thank you administrators. We had to come tonight on summer vacation. We truly appreciate it.